Good evening. I will call to order this regular meeting of the Town Council, July 23rd, 2024. We will start by standing if you can to the pledge allegiance and honor. Are you ready?
The United States of America and its republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're gonna make it technology, statues and all. The next item on our agenda is proclamations and presentations. We don't have anything scheduled. We are still working on bringing in the Little League team, the soccer group, sorry. Yep, that's still in the works. Okay. Thank you very much.
Reached out again today.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on the agenda, number five, is public petitions, communications and public participation. This is on any subjects within the jurisdiction of the town council with a two-minute limit. If you wish to speak, we, if you're personally asked to come up, give us your name and address. If you're online, you can raise your Zoom hand and we will go back and forth. Anyone in the room?
John Lappin, 168 Mountain Spring Road. Hello, Town Council. After some emails to some select representatives at the state level, I finally see some work on my property is moving forward. While I've not had any change since the last meeting and my property is still unusable due to the non-potable water caused by the contamination of my well, my hope is that I have more to report the next town council meeting. Hopefully good news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone online who should speak? Anybody else in the room? All right, seeing low attendance this evening, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is public items, which we have none. Agenda item 7A is reports of boards and committees responsible to the council. Firebox?
Yeah, so we met last week, some committee. A lot of good stuff going on there, an agreement has been made. We talked about last week, CHA and Lawrence Bernoulli about the cabinets. They're gonna have a new drawing and they're gonna put in the new ones to the ADA compliant. Keep those intact until the new ones come in. Frontier Comcast has come out now, they're just waiting for the alarm company to come out and set the alarms up for the fire station and then they'll be able to get their partial CEO out there and then they can start at least bringing in their fire trucks and other apparatus items and equipment that they may need in there. The other thing, window replacement on the base, supposed to be three windows instead of two that's on there. It's gonna be about two to three more weeks still. And the test pits on fire station 140 came back good. Those test pits were to check for any permanent foundation issues and they didn't find any, which is great news. And that will save roughly $700,000 of what they thought. So that's really good news. I put 800, but I know some other things that they need to do. So, but that's really good, positive amount of work. So that's more money they can put forward towards their other projects that they want to do. The fire station 140 and 340. And I think, lastly, Megan was gonna come tonight, but with the agenda packed, she's gonna come next meeting in August to talk about the urban grant about the fire station. What she can, how she can use that money for the future projects at station 140 and 340. I think that's it?
There any questions?
We have a meeting next Thursday, yeah, two days from now. So I'll be personal in a while, just to check in, see how things are going and also to take a look at what we're looking at for a balance of the remaining projects.
There's $54,000. $4,000, you know what I mean? Was there any movement on the potential orbit grant for the senior center since we last met?
No.
River Salt Task Force meets Thursday.
Yes. Not in conflict with that.
Next on our agenda is reports from Town Council liaisons.
They canceled PCC. I guess there's been potential people who are interested in volunteering. So hopefully in August they can have their next meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. So I met the Agriculture Commission, met beginning of the month. And this was a lot of seniors that attend the market. So they were possibly looking, some seniors had raised this, possibly looking to have like a place where they could pick up their goods and have them basically brought to their car so that, you know, if they have difficulty walking around, that would give them some time and effort to do that. So they're possibly looking at a spot where they can do that. Would have to be a cash or any type of system that's, you know, vendor can't run over and charge, charge for customers to pick up the ones they buy. Those are looking for an aerial map that they can possibly use where it shows where to park. Because I guess there's still some confusion about where to park. I believe there's some signage there. And then they're also looking for a blinking light at the crosswalk by the church. Which not only for them, but it's kind of a good idea to have a blinking crosswalk type of a warning system there. Because cars do fly down that road still to this day. And oftentimes, they don't, they don't stop at the crosswalk even if they see somebody standing there. So they're thinking a blinking light might be a good, a good thing to have there. And then there's some discussions about in the fall perhaps. That's when vendors have expressed an interest in having indoor farmers markets. So they're looking at some possibilities for that.
Joe, let me give you a specific, Chair, can I respond? Anything on 195 is DOT. Our Public Safety Director who's here, we've reached out to DOT a bunch of times, asking for a bunch of stuff, even offering to do grants. So we're working through it. We agree with a lot of their stuff. We currently have that sign in the middle of the road. That's probably not supposed to be there, but it does slow things down, but not that much. Any road in our town seems to have speeders on it unfortunately, as I get complaints almost daily. But I do stay in close communication with Steve. I answer to him a lot as well. I believe that's the right person, right, Lundgren?
Yeah.
Okay, I like the, I can get him an aerial map anytime.
Okay.
And any help he wants with that senior stuff picking up, what a great idea. And how can I help? And you know, I'm seven, you know, connected with that, that's a whole lot.
Have we got any kind of safety stick? Is that, you know, you look at other towns and their greens, like, and I think those are all Colchester off the top of my head. Their green is phenomenal. They're, you know, it's big old, it's big green. It's kind of, it's kind of safely set up that, you know, not traffic sort of whizzing by both sides. Kind of like you see on ours. I think, I mean, can we set up a new way to improve our green as we try to get more use out of it?
There, you may remember better than I do, when they, when they did the 195 project, that's when they would have assessed the safety there. In regards to events on the green, each event is looked at by myself, Chief Lightell, and at the time, the last time we've had to assess, Kevin Eklund, depending on the event, where we actually do a walkthrough and assess the public safety of what each type of event. If we have to put up temporary fencing, temporary signage, that sort of thing, or move certain things around the green, we do. But no, the, the, that is, and our publics, and our common traffics are, but our, sorry, traffic authorities in town as well. So between the four of us, we go and look at it. And those are some pretty good traffic mines that we tap into for safety. But that's, the 195 project is when safety would have been done. You know, some greens have nice granite posts with wrought iron, you know, thick stuff. But even then, it's not gonna stop a flying car.
Yep, so the WPCA, they're quarterly meeting for July. It wasn't the 210, but I got an update from Scott. They had a couple more connections into the system. Still remains a small system, beats up into Vernance Sewer System, it is. But the process of their issues is with the Santino Project by Big Y. They installed some sewer laterals to two of the buildings. So there is some work being done up there. Otherwise, no issues with the system as of my report, so, oh good.
Thank you. So Commission on People with Disabilities met last week. Actually, they're happy about the, oh, last town council meeting about the walkway going on the green. So that was really great news for them and they're very happy to see the town council unanimously approve that as well. So that was really good. And then every meeting, they each give a little highlight about a review, a list of topics for disabilities. And one of the members shared something from it's an ADA guide for all small towns. One of them was, we reported about that any temporary events, including like the Harvest Fest, the other, any of other events that were required to do marketing on information on if there's accessibility accommodations up there, which I'm not sure, Brian, if we already do. Maybe do something like that.
Where's this?
If, I can send it to you.
Okay.
It's a guide that tells you what you should be letting people know that's available, if they need something, if combined or with a bathroom site B, that kind of thing.
All right.
Or the combination, if they need combinations.
And this is for the people with disabilities, right?
Yep.
I reached out to Susan Lucick this week and asked that, I know it's difficult for them to have an in-person, but should they have an in-person, I would like to attend that next meeting.
Yep, she did.
And we'll get all that.
Yeah, yep, perfect. So she did mention that at the last meeting too, and you saw her email about that as well. There are other requests was, again, I know this is the main state road, but if there's any way to get a sign for wheelchair, people that they know with wheelchairs in the area, people see it, it's like more of a blinking light, similar to what we have down here. It's a crossing light, but more here for wheelchairs. And I believe Susan said there is something that the state does for that. If we have to, maybe more information on that, Brian, if you want.
Yes, please, I do want.
Yeah, she said state DOT representatives express support for putting up signage. Yeah, so I'll get that for you too. And I think that's really it. I know they also want to come to a council meeting and share their survey findings with the council. I'm sure it's probably maybe after we meet with Brian or something, but they definitely want to check back in with the council, which is a good idea to see what they're up to and see what the town is most concerned about with disabilities.
Planning and zoning met last night. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend, but I know that they were considering a zoning regulation amendment and a couple of special permits and site plan applications, things like that. So, yeah, unfortunately I wasn't able to go, so that's all I have.
The Stark District Commission did not meet this month as they didn't have any applicants who needed review, so they decided not to meet. The Health District, maybe, Brian, were you gonna cover that in your town manager report time?
Are you talking about the strategic planning seminar?
Yeah, the meeting that they had last week.
I'm happy to do that.
Okay, sure, thank you.
You talked about the in-person meeting in Mansfield.
Yeah.
Four hours. We can cover it now. It was a four-hour strategic planning meeting. It was a good meeting. I went, obviously went heavy where I could on what I thought the concerns were here for us in Tallent. There was an overall concern in regards to upcoming election, political polarization, mental wellbeing, online stuff mostly too as well, in regards to importance of what we all thought were important. It was interesting to hear that at the top of the heap compared to what was at the top of the heap, I think, in 2017-ish. So, but a good meeting, glad I'm a part of it. That's all.
Yeah, thank you for attending. I couldn't, I'm awful at doing that, so thank you very much for everything there. And the CROG Executive Committee is meeting tomorrow and unfortunately I have a little work. I think 11 o'clock, I have a little conflict that can't do that. The CROG is looking for any policy input from any town, member towns, and that is due, I think, in two days. So if there is any policy input from a legislative point of view that anyone wants me to convey onto CROG, I'm happy to do that, just letting them know. We will go on then to 8.1, which is the Fitch Ratings presentation with Lisa Hanco.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So obviously, we're gonna go out, as discussed, we're gonna go out to debt in later August, early September. And when in that process, we have to get our, basically, in layman's terms, our credit rating. We've been AAA rated town. There has been some fluctuations and subjective changes in the, we're told, in the Fitch Ratings process. We've met with Mr. Bernie Bernavi, our advisor, I'm sorry, Barry. And previously, he's here tonight, thank you for coming, and Lisa Hancock as well, but I'll hand it off to Lisa now.
Okay, good evening. And this evening, Barry is here and he has a presentation that he's prepared for you to talk about the new rating process and weights and averages and everything else that goes along with it with one of our rating agencies. And he will also discuss the importance of fund balance and issues along the lines of the whole process that's involved in the rating process. So I'm going to turn it over to Barry, and Barry, you can, you should be able to share your screen if you'd like.
Yes.
And if you can't, let me know. There we go.
Great, great. Thank, thank you very much, Lisa. Again, my name is Barry Bernavi. I've been assisting the town in the debt issuance process for a number of years. I've worked very closely with the town manager and with the finance director. And, and as they both said, that one of the ratings that the town has is from Fitch Ratings and they updated their methodology or their criteria. And based on my conversation with the rating analyst and Lisa's conversation with the rating analyst, there is some concern that based on this new criteria, that the town may be downgraded from a AAA. Not that it will happen, but there seems like there may be that, the possibility of a downgrade. So we put this presentation together, I work with the town manager and Lisa, and, you know, on page two here, we, we see the, the standard emporers rating scale on the left-hand side and the Fitch Ratings scale on the right-hand side. They're both exactly the same thing. The good news for the town is currently, the town is rated AAA by, by two of the top rating agencies in the country. And as I've always said with the town, I think the town is punching above its weight class to have these AAA ratings. It's, it's served the town well over the years in locking in these historical borrowing costs. And, you know, when people say, well, why are bond ratings so important? And, and really, it's, it's, it's used by investors to put a value on, on the risk of the bonds that they're purchasing. And, and just like for all of us, we have a credit score when we get a mortgage or a car loan, installment loan. Well, the, the credit score for municipalities is bond rating. And the AAA bond rating is the highest rating possible and allows the town to borrow at the lowest possible cost. So when we look at the town's capital improvement plan or the CIP plan over the next five years, you, the, the current CIP is approximately $26 million over the next five years. With this chart on page four, attempts to illustrate is that if the town were to get downgraded, there would be a cost. And, and that cost over the 20-year projected borrowing for the, the capital improvement program would be approximately $750,000. Now, some people may look at that and say, wow, that's a lot. Other people may look at it and say, well, it's not that much. I mean, it is though. It's pretty black and white. There is a definitive cost each year that would be higher if the town were to get downgraded. And that's reflected on page four. So that's one of the reasons, probably one of the most important reasons, to try and keep that bond rating at the AAA level. And, and in addition to that, is even beyond the financial cost. It's just the fact that the town has these high bond ratings. I, I think it's something the town should try to strive to maintain going forward. So as, as we move forward a little bit, we look at a pie chart here on page five of the old rating cat criteria. So, so one thing that's important to remember is the old criteria and the new criteria are the same. The only thing that's different is the weightings, how much weightings they put on each category. So, so when you look at the solid blue pie in the upper right-hand corner, it's called management. And then economy and wealth, so management's 25%, was 25%. Economy and wealth is 25%. Financial performance is 25%. And then debt service and pension and OPEB. And pension and OPEB is kind of long-term liabilities. OPEB is retiree healthcare costs. So this is the old breakout of how they allocated their ratings on page five. If we go to page six, we see their, their new ratings. And you could see that the management score has been, is, is been reduced from 25% to 10%. And the economy and finances have been increased. So when we compare them together on page seven, we see the, the rating categories on the left-hand side, the old weightings in the middle and the new weighting. So the management score went down, economy went up, financial performance went up, and long-term liabilities went up. Now, now what they do with their, this new model is kind of interesting. This first top part here, I call it the quantitative aspect, the spreadsheet aspect, where they simply put in the metrics into a spreadsheet and, and the model computes a implied rating. So in the past, that was a AAA. And, and I, currently now, based on our discussion with the analyst, it's not AAA, it's something lower than that. I put in a double A+, but I'm not quite sure what it is until we talk with them. But what they did was, was kind of interesting. So they call this above the line. And then they allow, under the new methodology, this issue called subjective notching, subjective assessments, where they talk with the town manager, they talk with the finance director, and they ask a series of questions. And if they like what they hear on these issues, they have the flexibility to notch that analytical rating up above, up or down. If they like what they hear, they can move their rating up. If they don't like what they hear, they can move it down. So it's quantitative and subjective, and then you get your final rating at the bottom. That's why it's critical, in the coming weeks and months, we have to schedule this rating call with Fitch to have this very call to discuss these issues. And I think that's gonna be critical. I know Lisa and the town manager have been very busy and continue to be busy, but it's something that we're gonna have to do, like I said, in the coming weeks. So, so the bottom line with this, again, based on our conversation with the analyst, is that, now, now remember, these are all comparative metrics. They say compared to or relative to other Triple As, Tallent's economic and demographic metrics are relatively weak. Now again, that's compared to Greenwich, to Glastonbury, to, to Avon and Simsbury communities like that in, in the wealthy communities in Fairfield County. Again, the town runs the risk of being downgraded, but I think it's gonna be critical to talk about the management score. And that's something that the town has always excelled on. In fact, in past rating reviews, they've even mentioned that the town's management score is one of the highest in the state of Connecticut. So what do they look at when we keep talking about this management? And on page nine, here's some, some, some questions that they typically ask for their subjective assessment of management score. They, they like to get a sense if, if, for example, if the manage, if the finance department is adequately staffed. Does the town have an experienced and finance director in place? Many communities don't. Typically, when they see that, when a finance director that's been there for a number of years retires or a town manager that's been there and has their arms around things when they leave, it typically creates a lot of issues that sometimes cause a lot of problems. Is the town struggling to fill various department head positions? Public safety positions, police and fire? Is the town having trouble getting budgets passed? Have the audits been filed in a timely manner? It just seems like each year, in the state of Connecticut, more and more municipalities are late filing their audit report for a variety of reasons. And it seems like that's starting to have more of a negative impact on, on, on bond ratings when, when audits are delayed. Another hot topic question they like to talk with the town about is how, what steps is the town taking to mitigate cybersecurity risk? Does the town have cybersecurity insurance? What steps are the town taking to mitigate severe weather events? Are there backup generators in place? Are there steps being taken to, to have contingency plans in place? And, and probably one of the largest ones is the rating agencies realize that every municipality's largest expense by far is education. And, and, and they understand that in Connecticut, there's this kind of tension between towns and the Board of Ed. There's always not the best communication. So they typically ask questions about how that relationship is, the town's relationship with the Board of Ed. Is it collaborative or is it antagonistic? And, and finally, the final one here is, does the town have formal adopted policies and procedures? Again, I think the town here has really excelled in the past. The town, I think, has one of the most comprehensive policies and procedures program, policies in the state of Connecticut. And, you know, for example, there's fund balance policy, a debt policy, there's, there's capital planning. So all those factors are subjective. And I think this is what's critical in the coming weeks when the town talks to the rating agencies, to, to get that management score up to mitigate any weakness in, in the, the quantitative aspects. So just moving along here, another critical aspect is, is fund balance. You know, the, the town's rainy day fund, capital position. Historically, you know, the, the, the town, the rating agencies like to see a certain level of fund balance. However, it, it, it's a sensitive subject, right? Many communities look at that and say, hey, our taxes are high now, our taxes continue to go higher. Why do we have to maintain these reserves? Why don't we use those reserves to mitigate the tax rate? But the reality is, from a rating agency perspective, they consider it prudent to maintain an adequate level of reserves for unexpected events. And also, they don't like communities to use fund balance to balance the budget. Even if, if fund balance were to get too high, instead of using it to balance next year's budget, which causes cliffs down the road, they would rather a community use it for one-time purpose. To say, listen, we're gonna borrow $10 million next year in store. Instead of borrowing 10 million, we're gonna draw down our fund balance by half a million or a million dollars to mitigate future borrowing. That way, it doesn't put a burden on, on, on subsequent years' budgets when you don't have any fund balance to use it to continue to balance the budget. And, and then just, just finally, one other thing about fund balances. Many communities, or some communities rather, kind of play some games with, with their general fund where they will perhaps underfund their pension or their medical self-insurance costs or other internal areas of their budget to make their general fund look perhaps better than it really is. So, so the rating agencies now not only look at your general fund, but they look at your overall government funds and make sure you're, there, there's no deficit in, like I said, in any internal service fund or pension plan or medical self-insurance or compensated expenses. They're digging deeper and looking closer at, at the results to make sure everything is structurally balanced. So fund balance is critical. Management score is critical. Just a couple of other things about fund balance, because it comes up. A lot of times people say, well, what is an appropriate level of fund balance? The Government Finance Officers Association, or the GFOA, recommends that municipalities keep two months of, of annual expenditures as a reserve. So you take two months divided by 12 months in a year and you get a ratio of approximately 16.7% in unassigned fund balance. That's what the GFOA says is a prudent level. And, uh, surprisingly, when you look at Talon's, based on your 2023 audit report, the town's unassigned fund balance was 16.7, uh, 16.9%. Uh, just above the GFOA benchmark. So historically, the town has maintained an adequate level of fund balance. Like I said, I just, we, we bring this up because sometimes there's this pressure sometimes to use fund balance, but that, that level is critical to maintain that, that AAA balance, that, that AAA rating. And also when we look at some metrics from all other Connecticut municipalities. So the Office of Policy and Management for the state of Connecticut produces these fiscal indicators every year. And when you take them and you look at all AAA rated communities in the state of Connecticut, their average unassigned fund balance is 17.2%, not that much different than Talon. Again, this illustrates that Talon is right in line with other triple As. In fact, if you look at all 169 communities in the state of Connecticut, so these are communities from low ratings all the way up to AAA ratings. You take the median of all of those and it's still at 15.2%. So if a community were to go below 15.2%, I think it'd definitely be kind of difficult to maintain that, that, that AAA bond rate. So the story on page 11 is the town's current reserve levels are right where they should be. Now someone may say, well, we think it's too high or it's too low. Everyone's entitled to their opinion. But again, from a rating perspective, the town is very healthy with fund balance reserves. And then I, this presentation goes on to, uh, some graphs that shows Talon compared to other municipalities that are rated AAA. And as, as we look at these, um, like this first one here is debt service as a percent of your grand list. Now with all of these charts, the farther to the right you are, the better. You don't want to be to the left. You want to be to the right. So you look at the, the way on, on the far right, you see Greenwich, their debt is the, the lowest of all the triple As. Now, now Talon is towards the left. So, so from a debt metric, Talon's debt metrics are relatively weak compared to other AAA rated municipalities. Now that in itself is not a major concern. It's just something to be aware of. The town has an active capital improvement program, but it's managed well. I don't think debt service has really put that much of a burden on the town's budgets going forward uh, in, in the past, it because that, 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 that management plan is so much effort is put into that. And that's why I don't think it's a ra, a major problem when we talk with the rating agencies. When we look at page 14 and we go to per capita income, this yellow bar in the middle is Talon. You're, you're right in, in, in the middle. Right at the median there for, for per capita income for all the triple As. And, um, when you look at equalized grand list per capita, again, you, you want to be towards the right-hand side. And again, Greenwich is an outlier way to the right. They're the wealthiest community in the state. And again, Talon compared to other AAA rated municipalities. Remember, it's important to say, we're just looking at AAA rated municipalities. Their, your demographics are relatively weak compared to other triple As. But again, that management score and fund balance had, i- i- is what has allowed the town to maintain that AAA rating o- o- over the years. And then this chart on page 16 is, is pension and retiree healthcare costs per capita. Now you can't even see Talon your way to the right. Th- th- this is one of the strongest metrics that the town has. The town does not have a comparatively large, um, retiree healthcare costs or, or pension costs. It's one of the lowest in the state of Connecticut. So as you can see with these charts, the town has a number of positive, uh, rating factors and some relatively weak ones. And what, what carries the day historically for, for the town is, um, is, is the management score. So just to kind of wrap things up, this new methodology kind of shifts some of their weightings to more towards the economy and wealth. But it's going to be critical in the coming weeks and months when the town does talk to Fitch to try and stress that the management, um, expertise that has historically been in place is going to continue going forward. And the town will make its case to, to maintain that, that AAA bond rate. So that kind of sums up the presentation. Hopefully it came across well. And if anyone has any questions, I could try to address them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council members?
Go ahead. Any questions? Are we having questions? This is Joshy. I have, I have a couple of questions for you. When, um, when is the S and P rating come, come do or come around again?
So, um, when, when the town issues debt again in the future, we typically talk to Standard and Poor's and Fitch. The reason why Fitch came up a little sooner is because they changed their methodology in the middle of the year. And they'd like to talk to the town, even if the town does not issue new debt, they, they would like to talk to the town. But we'll be talking to S and P again when the town issues bonds later this year.
Okay. How often, and how often is this rating done?
It's typically done on a yearly basis. Again, when the town issues, uh, bonds or notes, which is typically once a year is when the town speaks to the rating agencies.
And, and based on the, the the criteria that, uh, the rating agencies use, what do you think our greatest focus should be going forward to try to maintain our bond rating?
It's a good question. I, I, I think again, I, I, I mentioned this management expertise. You know, um, dealing with things that the town has control over, I mean, to change your demographics takes generations, right? It, it takes time. It's not something that, that changes on a monthly basis. But historically, the, the, the town has, like I said, has a qualified, um, management team, uh, uh, an experienced finance director. Developed comprehensive policies and procedures for fund balance, for debt service, for budgeting. The, the rating agencies in the past have assigned an internal score, what they call an FMA, Financial Management Assessment. That's kind of they do internally. It's not even a public rating. But they did share with us in the past that their FMA score for the town of Talon is one of the highest in the state. And I think that's what allows Talon to maintain that AAA rating. Because like these charts, I think illustrate, you know, from a demographic standpoint by itself, not that the town's demographics are weak, but compared to other triple As, like I said, in, in Fairfield County and the wealthy suburbs around Hartford, they are much lower than those communities. And that management score allows the town to compensate for that.
Yeah. And my other question, should we be focused on, on, when I look at our debt numbers and our, our, our future debt, should we be focused on trying to bring that down so that we're kind of more in the middle of the chart as opposed to on a very far left hand side? There's, there's two other towns here in the AAA rating towns that is worse from a debt perspective than us. So should we be trying to make an effort to, to move us more towards the middle here?
Again, I, I, I think that, that's a good question. And, and you know, um, as I tried to articulate during the presentation, um, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, historically, the town, as I said, has a, a, a capital improvement program of about $26 million. And, and over the years I've been working with the town, the, the town's debt service, annual debt number really hasn't moved all that much. The town has been very successful in layering in that new debt so that it doesn't put a lot of pressure on your current debt service budget. So i- i- in a way, I mean, is that true Lisa? I mean, has your debt been relatively?
Yeah, we've, you know, the way we've structured our debt management plan is to try to have a level burden on the budget going forward. So, and we will schedule projects to come on and cash flow to come on and off as debt starts to fall off the books so that it, it, it kind of levels it out. It hasn't hurt us as bad. I mean, certainly it would be nice if we could accomplish more pay as you go as we move forward. And depending on where the capital needs are in the future for the town, we could, you know, more focus more on as debt starts falling off, doing more pay as you go rather than issuing debt. Those are all the things that, you know, you would consider in future budget process, capital process, um, things to talk about. We're getting there. We have a couple more years before the debt starts falling off. But hopefully when we do that, we can start basing it in some.
Also, I, I know we had discussions during budget time that our policy, um, kind of some fund balance. I wish I wrote that percentage down, but unfortunately I didn't. Do you recall what our, our policy was? I know it was lower than.
Four, from a 10 to 15% on a sign.
So should we, can we modify our policy and what's your recommendation Barry? Should we modify our policies so that's close, so that's more in line with what the rating agencies typically expect? Cause right now our policy seems relatively low compared to what the agencies are now suggesting.
Well, I'll just touch on that. I mean, uh, yeah, the, the, the policy is somewhat low relative to other triple As, but the town's actual performance has exceeded that. So the fact that its current level over the last several years has been right in, in where it should be. Uh, as I said on that page 11 of that handout, it's right where the GFOA says it should be. And it's right in line with AAA rated municipalities throughout the state. So.
I agree. And it's, it's in a great spot. My concern, we had, we had debates, debates during the budget cycle that continued to point to our policy and saying, why can't we bring our fund balance down to our policy standards as opposed to the Fitch standards or the S and P standards? And if we wreck our policy, we may get out of that discussion next budget cycle. So it could be to our advantage to say, why don't we just match our policy to the, the rating agencies instead of this lower policy that continues to bring up during budget. I mean, maybe that's a discussion. And that might not be a question for you Barry, maybe it's more a question for the town council. Right. For our policy to be more aligned with the rating agencies' policies. And then, um, to sort of say.
Just, just to comment on that, um, you know, you, you still want to have some sort of flexibility. So you don't want to create a policy that's so strict, you can't do anything either. But I understand what you're saying. And yes, certainly that's something when the policies are reviewed again, maybe to, to talk about and maybe consider. Our policy does include, uh, also trying to go with the GFOA to try to meet the GFOA standard as well, even though we have 10 to 15%. The GFOA is higher than that. And we, the, the policy is to try to strive for this GFOA recommendation.
Which is pretty close to it.
Right. But, you know, having a reasonable percentage difference. And I think what we also built in, if it goes below a certain percent, that stops it from getting devastated and causing other issues. Be quiet now.
And then is there any advantage or disadvantage to, when we look at our fund balance to, to use some of that fund balance to go against capital expenditures so that we're not borrowing. We reduce our, we reduce our future debt or basically maybe bringing down our fund balance. So it's kind of like one, your pie chart is sort of moving one piece to the, to a different section of the pie chart, right? So, um, something we should certainly consider in your mind.
Barry?
So, uh, a- absolutely. I mean, if, 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 again, it, it's a policy of the town. E- each town has it. But, but I could tell you one thing, what the rating agencies don't like is the use of one-time revenues to balance a budget, right? They don't like you to sell, uh, a town building, use those proceeds to balance the budget because the following year, you won't have those proceeds again. Now, when it comes to fund balance, a lot of towns say, hey, our fund balance is too high. We're going to use, I'm making these numbers up, a million dollars of our fund balance to balance next year's budget. Now, now the town, I say, well, what's wrong with that? But the rating agencies look at it and say, wait a minute, you took a million dollars to balance your budget next year. When the following year comes along, if you don't take another million dollars out of your fund balance, where are you going to find that extra million dollars that you used? And, and likely each year that goes along, your budget increases. So it's almost like going to be a double whammy. It's almost like kicking the can down the road. So what they would prefer from a, it would be a rating positive. If you say, hey, listen, our fund balance, we think it's too high. We're projected to borrow $5 million this year. Instead of borrowing 5 million, we're going to use 1 million of the fund balance so that we only borrow 4 million. So what happens is you're using fund balance for a one-time purpose to mitigate future capital needs. And instead of borrowing $5 million for 10 or 15 years, you're only borrowing 4 million. So, so it's, it's a, it's a pot, they look at that as a much bigger positive as opposed to use it, using fund balance for operating expenses.
I agree. And then you run into the problem too, where now you've got a higher budget. And when you look at your budget and now you have to bring your fund balance up to a higher budget number now, your percentage, which then is sort of a double whammy if you tapped into it in the prior year. And then you're also, uh, you're also going to have debt issues if, if your rating drops as well. So.
Absolutely, absolutely.
My question.
You have a question?
Yeah. Questions and comments. So just to piggyback up your, your point Joe, you know, about the problem compounding, if you were to use it for, um, continuing expenses, you know, because each budget needs to pass a referendum. And if you do it in a situation, you know, like large taxes, as you were using fund balance, that budget then becomes harder to pass referendum, which can lead to kind of a situation where you're just continually burning down fund balance because you can't get one to pass. So. But thank you, uh, Barry, just for walking us through all this. I think this is just kind of especially, uh, enlightening to kind of see where we actually sit, um, relative to a lot of other communities with our fund balance. As, uh, Councilor Jay mentioned, we have, you know, we've had, had a, had a good discussion about, you know, what appropriate fund balance level is. Is it too high, too low? And, um, it's interesting seeing some of these towns significantly higher than us. Um, so uh, certainly, certainly good to see that in the context, um, of the other rating parameters. The other, other thing is because, um, we had brought it up and Lucy touched a little bit about it with our, uh, fund balance policy. I did look it up. I can just read it real quick. What it says, um, it does have the minimum 10 to 15%. It also says, it's most preferred to reach a level recommended by the GFOA best practice to maintain a balance of at least two months of operating revenues or expenditures, which may be greater than 17%. So it is covered in there. Certainly happy to, you know, council feels like we should talk more about that, but, um, is referenced. That's it. Not a real question, but also a notice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Murray?
Yeah, just one, one question. Um, so obviously some of these things are out of our control, right? We can't control, at least in the short term, sort of our demographics and, you know, the wealth of our population. So just to put it into perspective so that we can understand, you know, to what lengths we need to try to go to ensure we can maintain our AAA bond rating. Can you remind me what, what having the AAA bond rating saves us as opposed to if we got downgraded to a double A plus bond rating? I just can't find it.
It's about $750,000 based on capital plan. It's like the second, third slide.
Okay, I see it. So that's over the course of 20 years?
Right.
So it breaks down to about $37,500 per year?
No, it, it'll fluctuate based on the amortization schedule. The first year may be a little bit lower. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. Some years may go up to a $70,000 range, increase each year.
But over the course of 20 years, that averages out to.
Yeah, it could average that, but the impact on your budget will be substantial depending on how the, the schedule looks.
Obviously it ranges from 8,842 to 63,384. Those are the highs and the lows of that 20-year amortization.
For a year.
Yeah. And it does average to $37,500 to the average over 20 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
I have a number of questions as well. Um. Thank you very much for, uh, putting this together and and talking to us about the potential impact of these, these. Uh, rating criteria changes. Are we expecting rating criteria changes, uh, for standard impours as well?
I don't, I don't think this year. I mean, periodically, these rating agencies, about every. Seven to ten years, they will reassess their criteria and change it. Fitch was the most recent one that did it. Uh, we don't know when the other ones will, but, uh, nothing's on the horizon that I'm aware of for standard impours.
Thank you. Um, and I see from your pie charts and then from the comparison chart. That the, um, the management rating goes down considerably. It used to be twenty-five percent. Going forward, it looks like it's going to be ten percent. And I really appreciate all the information that you gave us on how Talon has scored very well on this particular element in the past. And, um, I think that is important. However, I'm wondering if you could give us some information on economy and demographics. Um, since that is one of the elements that has gone up. You gave us these really great, this really great slide on slide number nine. Of subjective adjustments with management score. But what kind of subjective adjustments would be made on? The economy and demographic score that we could perhaps be highlighting?
That, 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 that's a good question. Um, it's probably not where you, where you want to go with this, but, but you know, another town that was on here. Um, another city that was about to be downgraded by Fitch was City of Stanford, Connecticut. Now, Stanford's very different than 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 Talon. Uh, one's a a large city. But but you know what's interesting about Stanford to me is their fund balance is five percent. So, so the rating agency says, listen, five percent is too low. Th- that's way too low. You, you're, you're ninety percent chance you're going to get downgraded. Stanford goes, whoa, 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 wait, wait a minute. They created another fund outside of the general fund to try and mitigate that, but more than anything. But that, that, when you look at that, that pie chart that that's up there. Stanford, just as, as with Talon, we stress the management team, all the positive management aspects. In 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 Stanford, they stress their economy. So Stanford has the second largest grand list in the state of Connecticut, only to Greenwich. But their, their grand list is like thirty billion dollars, and it's growing at a very high. Uh, relative percentage increase each year relative to other communities. So, um, i- i- it's difficult, I think, for for communities in other parts of the state. To try and compete with those lower Fairfield County communities that that have access to New York City. But 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 I think your point is like, e- even West Hartford, which has a relatively low fund balance percentage. You see their grand list is very robust. Their property values are increasing dramatically. Businesses are moving in, restaurants are moving in. So it 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 it's very, very difficult, um, to kind of. Um, try and find, you know, the magic wand as to what it's needed to bring in economic activity in the community. Sometimes it has to do with just geographic location, um, a low tax rate, um, access to highways and population centers. Um, but but I I can tell you this, the rating agencies in general, to generalize. Say, all of the Northeast has a relatively low economic score. When you look at it compared to other parts of the country where the economy is growing dramatically, and they always stress like the Southeast. Uh, I think Tennessee and Florida and 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 and, uh, and in Texas, um, the economy is just growing at at very, uh. Aggressive rate that that makes Connecticut look very slow.
Yes, uh, and I agree with you on Stanford. It is the second largest city in the state of Connecticut now. Fastest growing, uh, city in the state, um. Substantial, uh, growth in their downtown center over the past decade. Including skyscraper-type residential, uh, something that in Talon, I don't think we're, we're ever going to see. But we are primarily residential community. Uh, as our, part of our financial advising team, what can we do? To keep the value of our residences high? In order to support this even more important economy and demographics weight on our, um, credit score?
I- 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 it's a good, it's it's a very good question. I mean, I I don't think I have the answer that that you're looking for. Again, I I don't know what the. The the magic wand, you know, what it takes is, all I know is, um. You know, to to continue to run the town in a professional manner, try and keep the tax rate as low as possible. And and encourage as much economic development. I I hear the same question from almost every other community I work with, because, you know, when you think about it. Every community's, their expenses grow each year. And what really helps a community, and and I've seen it, one of the success stories I've seen is is Shelton. Connecticut, you know, Shelton's down, uh, north of of Bridgeport. Their grand list has been growing so fast, I think that that town has not had a a tax increase in about seven years. Um, now, they've got some other challenges going on, but but when you have a grand list that's growing like that, it it helps to to mitigate, um. How much taxes you have to increase. But unfortunately, I, you know, I'm not an economic development person. I I'm not really sure what specific topics to mention. All I know is it's critical to try and grow your economy.
Sure, and, um. Perhaps that question was a little unfair. Uh, I, I work for the Department of, uh, Economic and Community Development in the state of Connecticut. And the, um, primary reason that our economists for the state. Uh, are finding that our state is seeing population increases when other states around us are seeing decreases. Is about the quality of life. Um, that the, the, when. I think the, the term, the line my commissioner uses is perhaps a. A pandemic that no one wanted. Has given us an opportunity to move in a direction that no one ever expected. And people, what we're seeing is people are moving into Connecticut for the quality of life options that that we can offer. Uh, that's certainly happening in Stanford, but it's also happening in other areas, uh, around the state. Um, and so. To me, uh, when I'm looking at these pie charts. Um, economy and wealth is just as important as fund balance. Is that correct in terms of the scoring?
Yes.
Okay, and in terms of the, of the other items that are on here, which are, um. Under their forty percent, the debt service, pension and management, in general, we're, uh. On a, on a stable course with those three items?
A- a- absolutely, yes.
And our fund balance, uh, is, as you say, healthy, um, and it and scores us pretty nicely?
A- a- absolutely.
Okay, so to me, it seems like one area where we might have some room for improvement. In order to, uh, punch above our weight class, I think is, is the term you use, Barry, is, is in economy and wealth.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yes, uh, Talon and and, like I said, many other communities strive for that too. How to grow the economy, that that is, uh, the hot question that I often get, yes.
What happens if our, um. What happens if our home prices, uh, the value of our properties, our homes start to decrease? Or don't increase at the same rate as other communities around us?
Right, so so everything is comparative, right? They they look at one community compared to the other, and that would be a credit negative if that were to happen. Uh, again, I I think as you mentioned and other people mentioned, it just seems like Connecticut, since COVID, housing prices have really gone up. And and the rating agencies have seen housing values in almost every community, uh, increase, um, over the last several years.
And so if the housing, uh, prices in our community weren't to increase at, say, the same rate as other communities. Would would that, you think, be a concern to the rating agency?
A- absolutely. That would be a credit negative, is what they would call it. If 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 the housing were to grow slower than other communities or go in the opposite direction, yes.
And, uh, do you have an assessment of, uh, what helps keep our housing prices at the. Growing level that they have been?
Well, you know, I I'm not really an economist. I I don't really delve tha- that that deep, but my my assessment is, it's it's a great community. It allows, uh, good access to the Hartford metropolitan area and to, uh. To other areas in that part of the state. You know, the highway is nearby, the University of Connecticut is nearby, so I think there's a lot of competitive advantages. That the town has, um, and I I think, uh, over the years, I I think that they look at Talon as being very well managed. You know, I think when, when, when businesses look around or where people look around where to live, they look at the quality of the schools and the management team and how well the town is managed. And, um, uh, I don't want to pick on any one community or not, but I. I I know some communities throughout the state that have really struggled to get economic development while other communities around them have have been very successful. And I think a lot of it has to do with if the tax rate is comparatively high. Or if if historically the town has not been well managed, why would a community go into one community when they could go to the next one right next. Next door and have a better-run community?
Sure. Uh, thank you for that. Um. As, uh, Councilor Moran asked about, uh, the cost impact to a rating change. Um, and and, um, our finance director pointed out, of course, that it varies on a year-to-year basis. But it is an average over, um, the twenty-year range of about three, thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. What, what is the value of that, um, in terms of balancing out? Uh, other decisions that might impact our economy score? Is this an item that punches above its weight class in terms of making decisions, policy decisions? That impact our economy, especially if that's an area where we know we need to make improvements?
I mean, if I, if I understand you correctly, yeah, I mean, clearly, I I think you want to maximize your economic score to try and keep that AAA rating, because. You know, whether you think that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of lower borrowing cost is high or low. It it is actual dollars that's saving to to the town. So so I mean, if you're given two options to borrow at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars lower or seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars higher. I would say to to try and borrow at the lower rate.
Sure.
Now, now, that, that spread or that cost is really not uniform. On that whole rating scale, right? If you get downgraded from a AAA to an AA plus. It it it, there is a penalty there. But the farther down you go on that rating scale, uh, it it's asymmetric. That penalty increases dramatically the lower your rating score goes. Hey, but 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 more importantly, I I I believe, I guess it's just my opinion. Um, if a community is rated AAA and there's another community right next door that that's rated lower. You would think a rational person looking to move into town to build a house would rather go to the AAA-rated municipality. You would think a rational corporation would say, everything else being uniform, to say, well, I'd rather be in the higher-rated municipality than in the lower-rated municipality. I'm not sure if that's true. There's other mitigating factors, but y- you would, you would think that it would play a part. In attracting residents and businesses.
Um, I don't know. Lisa and Brian, has that been your experience?
Not exactly. Um, we, you know. We wouldn't really know if someone decided to go to another town based on double A or triple A.
Is that part of our, um. I don't know, outreach and incentive to try to get more businesses in town? Or do we use our credit rating as part of that outreach program?
Yeah, we tout our AAA stuff as much as we can.
And how, do you think it makes a difference in terms of businesses making choices to cover?
I have no idea.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Um, Barry, thank you for that explanation, but I'm going to go back to my question again. Um, in terms of. The, uh, Councilor Shay referenced it during our budget pr- process this year. And in many years leading up to this year, um, the discussion about the value of our AAA rating. Um, and. Understanding that value when we're making holistic budget decisions, right? We are looking at, uh, what, forty-eight million dollar, forty-six million dollar town budget every year or so. Oh, sorry, yes, of course.
Sixty-one million.
Sixty-one million dollar town budget every year. Um, so we're above sixty million dollars, and yet, uh, year-over-year impact, an average impact to our credit score. Uh, a one notch downgrade is thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Again, averaged over the years, I understand that it varies from year to year. But when you look at a sixty-plus million dollar, um. Budget and you look at decisions that need to be made, uh, for an entire town policy. My question is, how much value is that thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars?
Ri- right, I I see what you're saying. Well, well, I I mean, I'm not sure, this is the answer to your question, but but I I don't see how a rating downgrade is going to help your budget. I I I, I mean, or a rating upgrade will help your budget. So so maybe, you know, the rating itself is not going to. Move the needle too much from your budgeting perspective. But 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 again, as as the presentation started, the the rating is is like a credit score. So, I mean. It w- w- would a person who's going to get a mortgage or a car loan? Would they like to have a higher credit score or a lower credit score? I mean, I I'm going to assume they would want a higher credit score to get a lower borrowing rate. So so when it comes to the, the, maybe we're, we're looking at it too too broad of a picture. I I I don't think the AAA is going to magically make your budget easier. But 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 it will allow the town to borrow at a slightly lower borrowing cost, is is all it is. I mean, let's not make more of it than it is, but. But it'll lower the town's borrowing cost, which in theory will to some degree help a little bit with your debt service.
I agree with you on that. Thank you. Um. I want to go to, uh, the slide that you showed on, uh, slide fifteen, which is, sorry. They equalize grand list per capita. Um, so, can you, can you just walk us, I, maybe you could share this slide and just walk us through it one more time?
I'll see if I can do it, Barry.
And it's like, uh, it's fifteen on on this chart, or, um.
That one?
Right.
Grand list?
Yeah, could you walk us through this one more time? I really appreciate it.
Sure. So so e- equalize is just a tricky word. So so as as I think you know, in Connecticut, every municipality does a revalue, well. Many communities do revaluations at different points in time, right? So the state of Connecticut generates a number each year called the equalized grand list. They they look at real estate sales. And they com- compute this equalized grand list. It should be pretty close to your, your, your grand list, uh, number. Um, and it allows you to compare one grand list, one town to another. Um, which is what this chart does. So so typically, um, uh. Communities like Talon that are primarily residential, um, uh, with the exception of Greenwich. But 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 communities that are are are, don't have a a sizable commercial base. Tend to have, um, uh, when you take your total grand list divided by the number of people in there, you get a, a relative metric of of of, uh, wealth. Of wealth. So if you look at the far right-hand side. It's not surprising you see mostly Fairfield County communities. Greenwich is an outlier. You see Ridgefield, Fairfield, Reading, Stanford, um, and then some other communities. So so that property is very expensive when you divide it by the number of people that live in town. And typically, um, eh, communities in in eastern Connecticut or in less populated areas. When you take the value of the grand list divided by the number of people, you get a relatively lower number. So this is a metric of wealth. Of wealth. Again, we're comparing Talon to triple A's, not to the state of Connecticut, you know, not to. Bridgeport or or Waterbury or smaller communities in eastern Connecticut or Litchfield County. These are all the triple A's that standard impours or Fitch rate AAA in the state of Connecticut. So it's, it's, um, you know, it's next to East Hampton, Hebron, e- even Simsbury is is towards, um, uh. The, uh, in in Cheshire there. So so I mean, you may look at that and say, wow, that seems low. But but you're comparing yourself to the cream of all the wealthy communities in the state of Connecticut.
And again, if I understand the change in the credit rating. Uh, this particular chart maybe, uh, may have a big impact on the analysis of our credit rating.
It it is, and in fact, I think that's what the analyst said to Lisa. It, it is, and in fact, I think that's what the analyst said to Lisa and said to me. Now, if again, if you go back to the, their model, they lowered the management score, but in a way, they really did not. The upper part is more the quantitative part, it's just looking at wealth, right? Because I think they got pushed back from some investors, right? So, so who, who utilizes uh, these ratings? It's the investors, right? So if you're an investor, um, if you go to, um, yeah, that, that one. So, you know, so management did go down up on the top, right? But that management score was just brought down to the bottom, to below the line, what they call it. And, and again, that's where that conversation comes, they want to have a conversation with Brian and Lisa. To talk about all those other subjective factors. You know, um, are, are, are you managing the town appropriately? Are you following your fund balance policy? Are you investing in the community and maintaining your debt service levels? Are you funding your long-term liabilities? Are you communicating with the Board of Education? Are you making sure that um, uh, you do monthly budget to actual reports so nothing catches you by surprise? All those subjective factors now are down below the line. So management really didn't go down, it went down up from up above. So, so when an analyst goes to Fitch and say, well, I want a AAA rated bond. I could buy Greenwich or I could buy West Hartford, I could buy Wilton and Westport. But you have Talon in that same category, how, how could you explain that to, to them? And, and this model, I think, helps them explain that better because. It shows, okay, so, so Greenwich is very high in economy and demographics. But Talon is very high in the subjective notching in management expertise. And that allows them to have kind of different communities have similar ratings.
So Barry, if I'm hearing you correctly. I, I think I, I, I understood what you just said to mean that you don't think that this change has a big impact on Talon.
Well, um, like I said, Stanford was gonna get downgraded, they were able to mitigate it with that subjective notching. And I think, um, I, I don't want to get ahead of myself here, but I think if Brian and, and Lisa have a conversation with them like we've had over the past several years. And explain that everything's on track, um, the town is not slipping and maintaining its fund balance and its budgeting and, and all those other subjective factors. I think, uh, I can't guarantee, but I think it increases the odds of keeping that, that AAA. Now, if, if, if the finance director had left, if the town manager had left, I, I don't want to pick on any, any one community. But, but like, the town of Bloomfield, they went through four town managers in five years. They went through five finance directors in five years. So when the rating agencies talk to a community like that, no matter where those metrics are up above. Those subjective metrics are gonna really hurt because the management team fell off the tracks. Right now in Talon, that's not the case. So that's why I'm cautiously optimistic that that conversation is gonna allow the town to, to, to keep that AAA rating. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you, and we know that we have um. A big upcoming retirement that uh, we, we have our eye on, right? Uh, this is something that we're very sad to hear happen, but uh, very happy for, for Lisa personally. Um, I, I think this highlights the importance of uh, what we as a town council can do to support you, Brian. As um, more subjective decisions need to be made, including with staffing. But they're, you know, Barry listed off a whole bunch of the other subjective uh, elements that are taken into consideration. Uh, I hope that you continue to um. Instruct us on how those would, how these decisions that we are making can and might impact things like our credit score.
Of course, I would do that, yes.
And you have been, I, absolutely, I, this was not a critique, this was, please continue to do that. Uh, thank you. Um, so. One of the other things that came up recently, actually came up in our last town council meeting, oh, thank you Lisa, was um. Uh, as you, as you actually just made reference to, we got our, our quarterly finance update, uh, which, which we get once a quarter. Uh, and kind of gives us the overview of how things are going financially. Um, we got our, our quarterly financial projection for uh, the end of the fiscal year for twenty four. And in, in that projection, uh, we are estimating somewhere in the close to maybe a million dollars of uh. Money that we anticipate depositing into our fund balance that, as, as we close out the books for fiscal year twenty four. Um, you know, as you showed us on these slides. Um, and as has been pointed out, our fund balance is currently at a very healthy level. Um, what, what kind of recommendations could you give us as a town for making decisions about end of year surplus?
Um, well, if, if the town appropriated some fund balance in the beginning of the year to balance the budget. I, I, I would recommend that you allow some of that surplus to replenish any fund balance that was expected to be utilized.
Yes, that, that million dollar is a net increase. Uh, it, it also takes into account the fact that we had budgeted to use, I think, three hundred thousand dollars. And instead of depleting our funds, our fund balance by three hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna increase it by a million, approximately.
It's, it's perfect what you just said, you know, it sounds, what you just said sounds so simple and straightforward. But I could tell you so many other communities where they say, listen. We budgeted the use of three hundred thousand. The fiscal year ended and we not only used it three hundred thousand, but we had another uh, unexpected event of another two hundred thousand. It seems like historically, and I could be wrong, uh, you know, your management team, your management expertise at town. Has found a way to make the numbers work, like you asked me in, in the past, it's like, I, I don't really have the note, I don't really know to be, I, I don't work in the community. But whatever the town is doing, it seems to be working right. Because you, it uses, appropriates some fund balance in the beginning of the year. All of these things happen throughout the year and at the end of the year comes. Your management team, your financial team finds a way to not only not use that fund balance, but to grow it. If you were to ask me how that happens, I, I don't know, but I look to you all, say, that's amazing. A lot of other communities cannot do that, so you guys have the magic bullet there, that, that's great. Um, and to continue doing that, I think is a positive. That, that's what holds that rating up each year. However you do it, that management discipline, financial discipline, it sounds easy, but whatever you do, it's working.
Thank you. So those are all my questions, are there any other questions? Counselor Butler?
I just have a quick question. Hopefully we'll never face this, but if we ever did get downgraded, do they tend to give us an idea of why we've been done downgraded? Do they give, they give us feedback?
Absolutely. Barry?
Yeah, uh, uh, absolutely, you're right, if, if, if your fund balance went too low, they would say, listen, we have concerns over your fund balance going too low, that's why you get downgraded. Now, typically, sometimes before a downgrade, they'll give you a warning shot, they'll say, listen, we're gonna put you on negative outlook. Because of your fund balance being too low, or your debt service being too high, or your top taxpayer moved out of town. Or you can't find a finance director, or your, your, your audit's been late three of the last four years. Typically, they'll give you a warning shot, not, not all the time, but they'll assign either a negative outlook or if. Now, you're AAA, you can't go higher, but if, if you were not rated AAA and you're doing everything right. Typically, instead of going right to an upgrade, they'll say you're gonna assign a positive outlook. You do those same things for another year or two, then you'll get an upgrade, so yeah, they try and be as transparent as possible.
If it looked like we were about to get downgraded, generally they tell us, hey, you know, it looks like you might get downgraded, th- these are the reasons, you know, and they give you. Kind of like a chance to correct that, how does that work?
It, it, it's a good question, you know, s- sometimes they do. Again, give you that warning shot to try and have you address it, other times they just go right to the downgrade. And I'm not quite sure exactly, sometimes, like whenever I see a downgrade. Uh, when I get the sense one's coming, I'll say, well, listen, why go to a downgrade, just give them a negative outlook. Sometimes they listen and sometimes they don't, they have this whole process involved with their analysts and a committee and they make a decision. Um, but if, if, if there's too many of the metrics are, are going the wrong way. You know, like if you have one year where your, your, your fund balance goes down, but there's other mitigating factors going the right way. Um. They take all that into consideration. So, so long story short, sometimes they give you a warning, sometimes they don't. But they'll always be transparent and explain why they, they did what they did.
And then so with the next opportunity for us to kind of rectify that, if they did downgrade us, was like a year from now?
Right, what, what worries me about the situation right now is, um, it's not so much being driven by the towns doing a bond issue. What's this, this with issue with Fitch is they're saying, we changed our methodology. So I think if they're gonna do something, they will not assign a negative outlook or a positive outlook, they'll just simply say, listen, based on our new methodology, the town will be downgraded. Um, in fact, they, they basically said that, they go, based on the analysis above the line. The town does not look like it belongs in the AAA category. But again, that subjective uh, conversation that's below the line is really what's needed between the town manager and the finance director and the rating agencies. To mitigate um, the stuff above the line. That make sense?
I, I understand what you're saying, and I probably missed this, but at, at what point are we gonna find out if we're gonna be downgraded? Or?
Um, I, I think, um, Lisa, has he reached out to you again to set up a call?
He has not, and uh, the ball's in his court, that's our rating analyst. Um, I know it had happened within six months of when they announced all this, which was a couple of months ago at least. Um. That they're, they're supposed to get, they have tons of ratings, when I spoke with him, uh, that, when I was down in Florida. Um, he said that there's tons of them that they're trying to get through, there's many different communities that are facing the same thing that Talon is. And um, so they're trying to get to them, he did not give me a date.
So I'm gonna say, in, in the coming months, in the next, uh.
Soon, within a couple of months at least.
So do they, I'm sorry, I don't, I misunderstood, but do they still have to have this like, these conversations that involve these subjective factors? So that would be the next step?
Right, there, it'll be more like a, um, a complete rating analysis, they've already done the preliminary where they popped all the. Uh, statistics, everything else into a spreadsheet program that they have, and now will be the conversation to see if we could notch us back up.
Do they let us know if we're gonna remain the same, is there ever a point where we're like, we can just breathe a sigh of relief, or, or is it?
Well, after they do a rating, they would tell us one way or the other.
Okay, so we'll know if we're just gonna stay the same?
Oh, yeah, once, once they do the analysis, um, we'll know either way what's gonna happen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Couple, couple of quick questions. Um, you mentioned the importance of a, of a competitive mill rate, or keep, trying to keep our mill rate relatively low. And right now, we're one of the highest in the state, I think, I think we're about thirteenth out of one hundred and sixty nine towns. Which obviously makes it difficult to attract businesses. What, what category does the, the mill rate fall into in these, uh, in these criteria here?
Um, I, I don't think by itself, it, it's not an indication, but I think what they look at is, if, if a community has a high tax rate. Typically, it causes the grand list to grow slower because i- it's that much more difficult to get businesses. To move in, to get new houses built, to, to get new economic activity in. When, when, um, uh, they could go to perhaps a surrounding town that may have a lower tax rate. So, so they don't look at it directly, but indirectly it impacts, I think, your, 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 your valuation, your grand list.
Okay, so is that part of that, economy and demographics?
Yes, absolutely.
Just a while as it went on, okay. Uh, we was waiting. Um, is it possible to get a, a listing and maybe, maybe this is on the web, I have to look for it, um, of the towns' ratings, all the towns' ratings in Connecticut?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
It's the policy and management, I think.
Right, the.
On their website, okay.
Your fiscal indicators, right, Barry?
A- absolutely, Linda, I could forward that to you and, and they have it all listed, um, every municipality with the rating.
That'd be great, that'd be great, and then, um, it's unusual, almost unheard of, to drop down two levels in a credit rate, correct?
Did you say to get a, a double notch downgrade?
Yeah, yeah.
It, 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 it has happened, um, but something dramatic would have to happen, like if two of your top ten taxpayers were to go out of business or leave town. You know, I think like Groton had, um, years ago, a, a large taxpayer that, um. Well, you know, i- i- it's, it is possible to happen, I think it's happened a few times, Hartford was downgraded multiple notches when they, uh, state had to come and take them over. And, and vice versa, I've seen a few communities get a double notch upgrade sometimes when, when they're very low and they start getting their act together. Uh, so it's very rare, but it does happen.
Any other question? Go ahead, go ahead.
So just following up from listening to everybody, so like you mentioned, Ms. Hamcock's gonna be retiring shortly. So, as they come in to start talking about where we stand, do they take that into consideration that that finance director will be leaving and will that affect us at all?
That is a good question, that is a good question, you know, um, I, I could talk about this quite a bit, um. You know, i- i- I've been doing this for twenty five, thirty years, if someone were to ask me what the most important credit metric is. I would say to have a qualified finance team, to have a qualified finance director. I, I'm not gonna mention any, any names of other towns, but I've seen communities that were going along fine for ten, fifteen years. With a, a qualified finance director, that finance director leaves and the wheels come off very, very quickly. Um, audits start getting late, budgets start, um, uh, problems with, with, with the budget. Um, and uh, so, so that is critical, they, they typically will ask, um. W- what the um, uh, planning, if there's planning in place to, to uh, bring people in, uh. To how, how deep your bench is to, to, to bring people along. You know, wh- whether it's uh, the assessor position, the tax collector position, the finance director position. That, that seems to be a big issue out there for whatever reason, there seems to be a lot of vacancies. Um, there, there's, in, in, in years past, there was this kind of, um. Training path, where in finance, in, in, in tax collectors, in assessors, young people would come up and take these positions. And it seems like it's just hard to find uh, the right person for these jobs, and that is a big problem from a rating perspective. So absolutely, I could see that question being asked.
I haven't told any of the rating agencies though.
Hopefully they don't watch our meeting.
But, but it is a problem out there, just look at the GFWA website, there's, there's lots of jobs posted and, um. I, I don't know again, the answer to this question, but for whatever reason, it's difficult to get qualified people.
When they, when I was replaced and I, I went through, within a month or two, our first um, leadership grilling, so to speak. Um, they were. It was a grilling, but we stood it uh, fairly well, so I, I would assume this, the process would be say, very similar, similar to when. Uh, if Lisa were to be, be replaced, and basically you gotta stand and show your competency to, um, the rating agencies.
Yeah, um, and then I guess my follow-up is since we had a budget that failed multiple times with those two indicators, is that gonna even hurt even more? And how much does a failed budget referendum hurt rated? Is it? Maybe minimal, or is it a huge impact? Cause it's mentioned in one of your indicators that, that can affect it.
Um, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you that way, you mean if it takes.
We had a budget that failed a few times this year, so I'm just wondering how much of an impact that will be on the new rating process.
Right, if, you know, if it happens once or twice, it's really not a problem, but if it's a problem every year. If, um, if like, for example, you did not have a budget now that, that passed and you're into the new fiscal year already. Then it becomes much more of an issue, but if the first uh, referendum doesn't pass and it happens once in a while, I, I don't see it as being a major issue. But if it's a chronic problem, then it becomes more of an issue.
Uh, this is more of a comment, um, because I think it's more of a policy consideration for the council. Um, part of the reason I had asked about sort of the.
Part of the reason I had asked about sort of the monetary impact of AAA versus AA pluses, because obviously we should strive to maintain a AAA bond rating. And part of that is obviously ensuring that we have a high, have an appropriately funded unassigned fund balance. But we also, as a council, have to make a policy decision about how we set the town up long term for success. And so we have to balance needing, you know, how much be put into unassigned fund balance versus how much should be, you know, invested, used towards town services and ensuring that Tolland stays an attractive place for people to move to, so that way our property values stay high and that we don't end up in like this kind of a death spiral where if property values decrease, maybe in the long term, we hurt our bond rating. And it gets much more difficult to get out of that if, you know, we start getting into territory where our property values go down. And so we, as a council, always sort of have that policy tension about, you know, sort of the short term, you know, what do we do keeping fund balance high versus the long term trajectory for the town? How do we encourage economic development? How do we make sure that Tolland remains desirable so that our property values stay high? So that's just a little bit of context, I think, as to why I asked sort of the the value, because we have to make those determinations policy-wise in the council.
Well, thank you very much, Barry and Lisa, for this presentation tonight and for answering our plethora of questions. It's really great to have you both as a resource. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure working with the town. And like I said, I think your management team is very strong. The rating agencies have identified it. And I'm 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 optimistic that that when the town manager and the finance director, we talk with the rating agencies, we're gonna make every effort possible to to ma- maintain that AAA rating. Thank you all. Have a good night. Okay, bye now.
So moving on, thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome. I'm going to be departing. Certainly, I'll be available by phone if you need me or anything else that comes up. If you do, yeah, you did great tonight.
Moving on to item, Agenda Item Eight Two, which is a resolution for the adoption of the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So essentially, when there's a natural disaster, FEMA comes in and we and and if we can sometimes recover funds from FEMA across the town, a lot of money, say, a hurricane or a tornado or flooding along those lines, where it's a deemed a natural disaster and we wanna try to recover funds from FEMA. In order to do that, we have to have in place a natural hazard mitigation plan. It's been done every five years, I think, dating back to two thousand and eleven-ish, if I'm not mistaken. But we have to, as a as a council, approve the adoption of the Capital Region Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. This was done through our economic development planner, Dave Corcoran. He's here tonight if you have any questions. So if anything guys would like to ask about it.
Thank you. And I know we have a link to it in our packet because it's hundreds of pages long. Yeah, so I hope you don't mind, but when asked by the town manager's office, I said a link was preferable. Over hundreds of pages. So thank you for that. Are there any questions about this plan or the request for us to adopt the resolution that's in our packet?
Yeah, good question. So thanks, Dave, for coming. Yeah, as Katie mentioned, it's a it's a very long document. So the answers are in there and I can find them. I apologize. What passes? Like what what is, is there any burdens on the town that need to be carried out in order to stay in compliance with this? Is there is there a monetary cost with any of those?
No, there's there's no direct monetary cost. A lot of this is aspirational. We did include some town-specific items. They're things that we are largely doing anyway, such as replacing the the center pier on South River Road or the Little Mac River and some other items like that. So we we didn't include anything that is going to add a cost or or effort burden to the town moving forward.
Okay. And what are the like big changes, if any, since twenty nineteen?
Yeah, yeah. So I I would say this is largely perfunctory. Since twenty nineteen, the state has honed in its resiliency framework and and CROG opted to sort of piggyback on that in the plan update to sort of have the plan align with that statewide policy framework. So it does include some stuff related to climate adaptation and resiliency, which are things, as you know, that FEMA is also kind of hitting on and wants to see emphasis on. So so that information has been added. Nothing that conveys a direct burden to us to do anything though, beyond what we're already doing.
What is the climate change point you made is interesting because I saw that here. But I was, what is the town doing? What does that require us to do in regards to that?
Yeah, so so these are largely regional goals that aren't aren't things that Tolland specifically is is going to have to look at beyond things that may, you know, evolve in state statute over the next few years that are outside of the scope of of this plan itself. It it provides some aspirational stuff, but if the town wants to chase after with enthusiasm, it can. And if it doesn't want to, it 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 doesn't need to. It doesn't bind us to specific action items only suggest that we are in support of of some of these goals, if that makes sense.
Okay, what is some of those goals are are from that area?
Yeah, so if you look at the front executive summary, there's there's some items in there. So there's there's nine region-wide goals that are carried over from from twenty nineteen. And then and then there are various other items to deal with, things like dam failures, forest fires, earthquakes. And and then you can see, I think it's on page thirty-five, there's five new goals which have been identified. Ensuring that critical facilities are resilient, especially to the shelters and cooling centers. Addressing risks associated with extreme heat events, especially as they interact with other hazards. Reducing flood and erosion risks by reducing vulnerabilities and consequences, even as climate change increases frequency and severity of floods. Reduce losses from other hazards and and invest in resilient corridors to ensure that people and services are accessible during floods and that development along corridors is resilient over the long term.
Okay, that that helps. I just wanted to know how to specifically look at that help. Okay, and then just curious, when's the last time a disaster where we needed FEMA money? When was that declared? Do you know?
I would look back at John Fur, I don't live with that one.
I think that was in sixteen, fifteen, I think it was. Then before that, there was the huge one, two thousand and eleven, that was eighteen days, twenty days.
Is that the snowstorm?
That was the major power outages on Halloween when the poor guy killed Halloween.
That was a long one. Yeah. Okay, no, thanks, thanks, David, John. I don't have have an issue with that. I feel like we need to be eligible for the funds, but just wanted to understand a little bit better what was in the very large document.
Are there any other question? I guess my question is for a recognition more that this is another benefit, I think, of being part of CROG, right, is this hundreds of page document is probably out of scope for our town staff to develop independently. But being part of this council, this regional council of governments for a relatively nominal fee and 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 dedication of time is showing its worth again. So thank you, David, for representing Tolland on this and for our our public safety director and those people for for really making a contribution, because I know this place doesn't run without you guys.
It's a team.
Yeah, it's a team, good team. So thank you very much for this. Are there any further questions? So before us, in our packet, we do have a resolution adopting the CROG National Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan update for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-nine. This does look a little different than our normal resolutions because, I assume, because it was prepared by CROG for us. But we're still being asked to consider and potentially approve. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Council Morin. Is there a second? Second by Council Butler. Is there any further comments or questions before we go? Do we need to do a roll call on this or we can just do voice vote here? I think we can do a voice vote. Yeah. No. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
That's everyone. Thank you. Thank you very much for all your efforts and for bringing it to us.
Thanks, David.
So Agenda Item Eight Three is the consideration of a resolution dissolving the Virchgrove Building Committees for the Virchgrove Primary School Project.
Thank you, Chair. I can't imagine how much fun it was to be on that building committee and all that has transpired since the beginning, but I thank you all who were on there. And again, when I say I can't imagine how much fun, I'm obviously being sarcastic and I can't imagine the stress and effort going through there. So thank you. And I know you had a big role on that. So to you, Chair, and everyone else, thank you. That being said, everything is closed out on it. And we're looking to dissolve the committee rather than just let it fade away. Let's do it properly and close it out. And that's all this is.
Are there any comments or questions about this?
I just wanna thank, you know, you, Chair, and then all the members of the committee, because, you know, you've been in the face of some challenges and things. I think that the project came up great for the town. And as as Brian said, I'm sure it was a lot of time spent. So thank you to everyone who was on the committee.
I I wanna especially thank the town staff and our director, Beverly Bellaty, for this. It is
Who was best or grilled by the or interviewed by the FBI.
Right, yeah, that's
With our town attorney and then stood tall and represented the town well. So yes, thank you, her in fact, yeah, there she is online too. But yes, that that was impressive. And I I know how mean investigators can be.
Well, it was it was certainly, it took a lot of time and dedication from from Bev and and other town staff. I know there was a lot of town staff involved. The the prevailing wage and CRO requirements were done out of the town manager's office. There there was a lot. It took a village kind of a thing. And to have this project completed ahead of time, under budget and this beautiful school that our children are using regularly is just a wonderful testament to what our community can do when we come together. So yeah, let's let's get rid of it. We don't need it anymore. Is there a motion to approve the resolution of Agenda Item Eight Point Three?
Moved.
Moved by Council Morin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Morin. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And next on our agenda is appointments to vacancies on various municipal boards and commissions. Looks like we have some for the committee on people with disabilities. So it's you. O P W D. Yes. Commission. Yes. Okay.
Sure, I'll just say that, but we have four individuals that are up for reappointment to the special people with disabilities. As always, we thank them all for all the time and the effort that they put into the town. The town relies on a lot of volunteers. And so, you know, they've been doing a great job. And so we would, I think, also Shane and I would recommend and the majority of your assistance on on that, unfortunately.
Are there any questions on this?
I do. So it's great, first of all, to see the commission get so active. You know, we have a lot of trouble getting some people to serve on others. It's really good to see so many people stepping up to serve. How long are the the terms? Is it, am I reading that right? Where are most of them? Just one year?
If I may. Most of them are one year. There are are two slots that are two-year that just serve as an overlap. Bev Bellaty probably could weigh in more, but when this committee was designed, was founded, the thought process was that a lot of different people might want to be involved. So they didn't want the terms to go on endlessly. They wanted to give a lot of opportunity for input. So they designed it purposely with short terms. We haven't had a lot of turnover. There hasn't been a ton of new interest, but the folks that are involved are very dedicated to it and very passionate about serving. So there hasn't been an issue with vacancies on that.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Sure.
And I'm just working with them all, like you just said, Sarabat. My third year on it is seeing people who didn't want it such way for other reasons, but they're great groups to work with. I'll say it again, the town's very lucky to have them.
Is there a motion to approve these four reappointments as outlined in our packet? I'll make the motion. Motion made by Council. You can check. Is there a second? Second by Council Morin. Is there any further discussion?
Just wanna thank you, Sarabat, as always, for all these things, because you keep Joe and I on on the straight and narrow. So thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now we are on to Agenda Item Nine, which is old business, which we've none. Number ten, reported the town manager.
Thank you so much. As you know, we're trying to work through the PCC and get some people on there. It it's going okay. But we would look to, again, keep pushing for some PCC volunteers. It's unfortunate, the timing. Without saying that it's calculated, it's it's somewhat conspicuous, but right before one of our biggest events on the green and that the PCC, every member except one, has left. That, the reason I say this, is that there may be the possibility of us having to cancel Harvest Fest and the scarecrow contest, as we have not gotten the information that we need from the former PCC. We might not get it until August. We're told and and other people have said we need to start lining some stuff up now. We have had some pre-planning meetings for that. We do have some staff assigned, but understand that there exists that possibility. We are doing everything we can not to do that and forge ahead. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on that. We have had some letters of interest. Something that we may have to consider is staff doing it entirely or canceling it for a year and then looking to revisit it next year, because it is, you know, coming down to crunch time. I've got a meeting, we had a meeting with CROG today, all of CROG basically, not many of CROG came out here to Tolland. We talked about the the P O C D, the strategic plan, a lot of grants, regional services. It was as far as staff that attended, Beverly, Megan, Beverly, our human services, Megan, our our grants person, DPW director. And Dave, our planner, all were in the room with with CROG. And you are correct, that that thing today, you know, it's comforting to know that CROG put it together and I can read the executive summary as opposed to assigning three hundred pages to our public safety director and our planner to put together for this and then certainly something we absolutely need. Regionalization of services, we talked extensively about the animal control facility that we want to split with the town of Willington and then for services after. They had suggestions in a couple of different ways around that. They have some pre-existing documents with other towns that have done regionalization. We talked holistically about greater utilization around public safety was one of the things, our building inspector Um, around, uh, public safety was, uh, one of the things, our building, uh, inspector, uh, being another. Uh, it's so, it, it was a, it was a good meeting, uh, some, I, I begged them for some, um, and we'll have to face this as a council, the, uh, policy on how we're gonna spend our marijuana proceeds that we're gonna have coming in. So currently, we've, uh, Lisa's had set up a fund. We have about three thousand and change coming in. Uh, it's sitting in that fund. We're not gonna touch it until we have a policy, and so what I wanna do is look to other towns. What do these other towns have for policies? Let's show them to us, and you guys, uh, make a decision. Uh, so that's, that's, um, it was a good meeting with CROG. We have some follow-up stuff. Main concerns, uh, salt in the wells, salt on the roads, um, the water softeners, um, I'm trying to think what else. We, we hit him with, I hit him with as much as I could, uh, today, that, that a lot of, a lot about Talon not being eligible, uh, for certain grants and other towns being eligible. Some frustrations over solar, uh, electric vehicles, um, and they're, they're always, of course, looking to offer us, um, some assistance, so it was a good meeting. Um, while I'm in the neighborhood here, um, as you remember, we were pointing, we, we approved one point, uh, two million dollars for a squad fire truck just recently. Uh, and, uh, Councilman, you check had brought up it, but there was not gonna go out, whether or not it was gonna go out to bid. It did go out to bid, um, it was, it came in for less money. This was years ago. As you can imagine, for now, fortunately, we bid it at, or we, we predicted around one point two million when we put it out to, to debt this uh, recent, through this recent budget. We have to lock in, um, by the end of the month to secure it at one point two. You have the option of going out to bid again if we, if we chose to. Uh, that would cost, uh, but obviously thousands of dollars to get, uh, somebody to put together a bid for this type of apparatus. Um, and there's no way we'd get it in for, I don't believe, uh, one point two. Previous numbers over the last two years were seven fifty, nine fifty, and one point two. If I can get it in, uh, by the end of July, it'll be one point two if our financial, uh, policy allows, uh, me to make that decision not to go out to rebid and, and to lock in at one point two, so, uh, we will be doing that, um. I wanna thank Noreen and, uh, John, uh, for their work during the tech failure, uh, over the weekend. Um, obviously, they were up, uh, early and working through it. We, uh, you know, obviously, the main concerns, and you, you all got my text message, you know, nine-one-one, uh, emergency services, water, sewer, those types of things, uh, for us were, were primary, secondary were our town computers. It took some work. Uh, South Windsor IT was on site, um, the, the morning of the, the tech failure, um, and we mitigated, uh, very well, and, and I we, we got basically everything back on track with, with not a lot of, uh, problems. Uh, but thank you to, uh, Noreen, and again to Chief Litel and Doug Racego too, for, um, answering my nervous calls, uh, overnight. Some questions about the bridge on Route seventy-four. Again, as of right now, August, DOT told us August eighth is what they predicted and, and when they're gonna open. Um, which is makes, makes me very happy. We, they usually come up with, give us a few days' notice and have a, a meeting at the end of each month. Uh, we haven't gotten anything yet. Uh, hopefully, we'll get an update, but we've also haven't got any bad news either. Uh, when the bridge does open in August eighth, they're not done. There's gonna be a lot of work, obviously, around it, but they should be able to get the lanes open for that. That'll be good news, uh, for Walt, who also does attend a meeting on the Board of Ed side. Um, as to point of notice, um, CHA, our town engineer, is no longer our town engineer, and I did not read the contract and informed, um, the representative of that yesterday. Uh, we have signed on two new, uh, engineers, Russo and Cardinal, both with, um, different, um, areas of expertise. Transition over to, um, a meeting we had with Russo, a confidence meeting in our park garage. Uh, unfortunately, and I'm sorry, we lost, uh, an architect that we had subcontracted with. He passed away during this process, so this meeting was about, uh, moving through that successfully. Again, this is under a tight ARPA, uh, schedule. I have complete confidence there will not be any problems with the, um, with the architect, as it was mostly completed. The work that was completed has been transitioned over to, um, cement engineers, and they are working with Russo as well, and I, I believe that we are gonna be in good shape. Uh, knock on wood for our parks garage and getting everything, um, getting everything contracted prior to December thirty-first. DPW, Department, uh, DPW Director and I did some on-sites this week. We went out to Santini, met with the, the contractor there, Pierce, and looked at, again, the, some of the sewer hookups, some of the foundations that are going in, clearing. It's, it, it, um, starting to look like a development out there. Uh, it's starting to look good. We stopped in at Trytown as well, spoke with the contractors there, the Trytown, I'm sorry, Gymnastics Center. Um, all that's moving ahead smoothly. We have our, uh, development meeting tomorrow. Um, there is going to be blasting behind Dunkin' Donuts tomorrow, I believe it was. Williams is doing it again, that area, uh, we're hoping to have developed, but there will be some blasting, and that was, like, given to us, or given to me today by our fire marshal. He makes all the proper notifications uh, to the neighborhoods up there, but standard in, uh, developing this pro, this property for development. Uh, in the development area, Inlands and Wetlands, I attended their meeting, I forget what day last week. They approved the, uh, medical facility at the end, at the, at exit sixty-nine, which is great news for the town, and I thank uh, the Inlands and Wetlands. Uh, you know, if you ever sat in a meeting, but it's, they're basically all engineers, or all are really smart, and, and I thank them, uh, for their service that they provide us to hear, hear in town and for passing that through. Uh, that's all I have, if anyone has any questions.
Council Morin. Um, couple ones. So, for the fund that we're placing the, the cannabis revenue from, how long of a period has that been? Like, how long did it take for us to get that?
We just got it.
Okay.
I would say within the last two weeks or so.
Okay.
Lisa brought it to me, said we were getting it. I'm assuming we got it, and you might not even have got it yet, but, uh, that's where we are.
And, uh...
It'll be monthly, I believe, right, or quarterly?
I think they're quarterly, and the store opened late April
Yep.
of twenty twenty-four.
Yep.
Okay.
So we need some support.
Oh, that's what you were asking them.
Yeah, yeah, I was trying to figure out.
Well, there's a delay, but it'll be steady, I believe, once, once everything's set up.
Okay. Um, second question was, uh, so they're doing some blasting behind Dunkin'. Is there like a plan for development there, or is this kind of gorgeous preliminary?
Preliminary developing the pro, the property either for sale or development, increasing its, its value, essentially getting some stuff done. There is nothing specific that I'm aware of going now. Thank you.
I just had one very comment. I know you talked about the permanent celebration earlier.
Yep.
But Mary Pat, when she did design, she did mention that she had binder and a whole bunch of information in there. Did she get that?
She won't be able to get it to us till August.
She won't be, is there a reason?
Vacation or in such, Sarabeth?
She was away at a business conference for ten days and then came home and had some vacation and just said she wouldn't be able to have it ready until the first week of August, so we agreed on getting together then. She's gonna come in, she's willing to meet, sit down, kind of go over transition, but she really wanted to have things in good order before she handed in.
She does, and I believe she will, um, but I don't know, we'll have time.
Right, because we got an email from another former member, saying...
Same, we should already be doing some stuff. Yes, and we spoke with her.
You've talked to that over?
Yes, yep.
Previous member.
Yep.
Um, so, um, any other question?
Should I have one more? Um, so, regards to the Harvest Fest, do you know when we'll, you know, we, we have to make that decision to cancel that event?
Yeah, in the next couple of weeks, we'll have to make a decision. Yep. Thank, okay, I, I gotta sit down and look at what it, what it entails. Is it something that we can rip out here?
Okay.
Um, you know, it's gonna be a, a pretty heavy lift, throwing some new people. It's able to get, get resource and celebrate Talon folks, um, which, you know, we, we could cut, and I wanna combine the two.
Yeah.
Um, you know, a kid's own down the other green, I think is, is a great idea, um, the bounce houses and such, but, um, again, there's a lot to assess.
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, pushing me a little best, hopefully it works out, but, you know, I understand the, the circumstances.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, even if, um, even if it's like worst-case scenario, it's a scaled-back type of event, um, if there's something that we're, that we're able to pull off, I think that would be great, but, you know, obviously, like Jacob said, we'll have to, have to see how it all plays out.
Absolutely agree. Um, again, if you don't celebrate Talon, we lost it, and it was unfortunate. It would be most unfortunate to lose, um, this, and I, that, you know, it was a signature event for the town. Um, the last two years, and since I've gotten here, it's gotten bigger and better, um, so I, I would love to continue that inertia.
Other questions? Thank you very much, Frank. Uh, the next item on our agenda is number eleven, which is the adoption of minutes, and we have in our packet the July ninth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve these?
So moved.
By Council Mari. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council Moran. Is there any discussion about these minutes? Uh, all those in favor of approving the July ninth, twenty twenty-four meeting minutes? Please take if anything you have.
Aye.
You've seen it? Okay. All right, uh, the next item on our agenda is number twelve, correspondence to Council.
Thank you, me, my second, Katie, my, you were just putting a hand up.
Yeah, that's what happens, right?
Doing something really weird right now.
Okay. Do you want to come back here?
Yeah, if you wanna come back, I, give me a wait for you. Maybe. Sorry, all right, here we go. I can tell you I got an email today about, um, the, the bridge that I believe Brian touched upon, um. Let me just go into my president's, uh, email folder here. And there was only a few. Yes, so we got a couple emails from the same, right, in different days. One was about, um, regulations, um, regarding backyard shooting. She sent in an article about it, and then also another town has, is, um, we have a policy on it or regulations. But the one about we, because I don't have the notes in front of me, but the one about the letter that we got was, I believe, in Coventry. In Coventry is forming some sort of committee, um, to look into this. I'm not sure if that's something Talon's not wanna be interested in doing. And then I think that was really it. I think we got the one from today, the two from the same person. Great, I think that's really it.
You don't want to test words?
We talked about that the last meeting.
Hold that for last meeting, sorry.
I could talk about this, correspondence if you'd like or not. I should have included that in my town manager report. Um, I, I, I met with the, the Coventry Town Manager, um, about that. I wanna say somebody else, oh, yeah, the previous Coventry Town Manager, we were both there. Uh, they are where Talon was before we put our policy into place. The, the thing that, uh, I read the, the, the so they're, they're behind us basically, and, and I reminded them that they need, if they're gonna create any laws or ordinances, they would likely need to, um, work with the state's attorney's office to see if they're gonna back it up. If they fail to pay, if, if, let's say, Coventry PD issues a summons, you're in violation of our shooting distances. Will the state's attorney back it up if they don't pay it? And we're, we're the team in it. Um, there's a criminal aspect or a civil aspect here. Ours are reinforced by the state police here, and obviously, we need the backing of the state's attorney, which we don't essentially have that much in regards to doing this. The Lebanon stuff is for an actual shooting range.
Okay.
If we're going to have a shooting range as opposed to shooting a gun out in the woods, um, so, uh, I'm, we're watching that closely.
Thank you.
Yep.
I would hope that, that's all I had. All right, item, uh, thirteen is Chair Person's Report, um. So, the first item is the town manager review process, and I think, uh, Council Mari and I are finishing that up right. We're gonna come up with a date.
Yeah, actually, I, I did send you an email like that, yeah.
That's all right. We'll, we'll talk about it after this and come up with a date for that.
Yeah.
So, uh, thank you, everyone, for submitting all of that. Um, I wanted to, uh, ask the council about, uh, thank you letters to the Virchgrove Building Committee members. Um, I was gonna write them. I didn't know if there was a level of comfort for those to be, um, for me as town council chair, or if you prefer I do them as the former chair of the building committee. Jacob approves those letters. Is it, oh, does anybody have any objection to the town essentially thanking them?
No.
So sorry, it's coming from?
Like the town.
Oh.
If I did it as town council chair, it's essentially from the town. Okay, so I'll draft a letter and send it to Jacob, and, um, I'd like to thank those people, because there was a lot of time and effort that went into that, um, and I think of letters.
Which is a new one.
I'm okay. Uh, they, seeing the kids in the school is, is all the things that, that I wanted, so, and I, I get that on the regular. Um, I had chair hour last week, and I had three residents come in. Uh, the first resident was Suzie, who was accused, who specifically asked me to thank everyone on the council for, uh, our commitment towards accessibility on the town green. She, uh, sort of made sure that she took some time on her day to come talk to us, talk to me about that, and wanted to make sure. I passed that along to you as well, um. I had a resident come in and talk about, um, climate change issues and what the town can be doing to, uh, help mitigate the impact of, say, fossil fuels and, and things like that, uh. It's a regular customer, uh, to talk to the council chair, and, um, I had our representative from the Tourism Commission, uh, come in and talk about the efforts that are currently ongoing, um, with the town manager's office and our volunteer who works on, on tourism for the town, so, um, it was it was a robust hour. Um, just wanted to remind everyone, and if you, if you haven't seen the little video that's online, you should really find it, uh, because it, it features our account manager, um, uh, advertising for the Tom Youth Services Community Theater play that is this weekend. Um, he, he stars as a cameo in the advertisement. I don't think he, he, they've allowed him on the stage yet, but, um...
Very shy, so.
Yeah, you're very shy, but the, the Little
Introvert.
The Little Mermaid is, um, is coming to Talon, uh, this weekend, uh, Friday and Saturday night at seven o'clock. It's gonna be a great show. There's over like a hundred and five, hundred and ten kids that are in the show, which is pretty amazing, quite an undertaking. Yeah, it's a lot. Um, the, the Human Services Department here in town, especially our new, um, Assistant Director of Human Services, is doing an amazing job with the kids. Uh, I'm sure that Council Butler's kids are also having a very good time, um, so much fun. Um, so, uh, my kids are really looking forward to it, and if you wanted to go see The Little Mermaid this weekend, uh, Friday and Saturday night at seven o'clock at high school. Um, and I, uh, continue to, uh, be committed to my gratitude for having a budget. We did certainly hear about the importance of, uh, financial security uh, in terms of our budget. Um, I think it is important for us as, uh, leaders in this community to understand the impact that this particular budget has on our community, um, just highlighting that, uh, there are a number of high school students who have, um, signed up for electives, or they, they get to kind of choose their classes, um, in high school, and, um, some of these uh, more popular classes have, uh, been filled and have a waitlist of, of over a hundred students, um, for, for some of the more popular ones. Um, and I know that not all of those classes will actually be held this year due to, um, the expenses on the Board of Ed side exceeding our, uh, ability to, to keep up with those, so, um, continue to be grateful that we do have a budget, continue to be very aware that that budget has substantial impact on the residents of our town. That is it for me. Uh, we are on to Agenda Item fourteen, which is communications and petitions from council persons. Somebody have anything they'd like to round? Unless, okay. So we are on to item number fifteen, which is public listed participation on any subject within the jurisdiction of the town council with a three-minute limit. If you are in the room, you can come up to the table. We ask you to give us your name and address. If you're online, you can raise your Zoom hand or press star nine, and we will again ask for your name and address, and we'll alternate between the two. So we'll start in the room.
I'm John Lafferty, yeah, I'm going. John Lafferty, one sixty-eight Mountain Spring Road. I alluded to the fact earlier that I contacted some local leaders at the state level to help move along this issue of my property. I wish that, that, that I would not take this necessary step, and this town council would work harder advocating for me. I'm a constituent, a town resident in good standing. I feel strongly that... I'm a constituent, a town resident in good standing, I feel strongly that the town council should support my position, given the numerous studies that have pointed to the town negatively impacting my wealth from its roadso operations. In speaking to several differing parties, everything points to delays being caused by the town's insurance company. Have any of you reached out and asked, what is the holdup? What steps has the town council done to put pressure, or even simply to inquire why it takes so long for things to be approved from the town's insurance company? Has the town explored a different insurer? That might be, that might make them a little more responsive to these claims. I would like to remind the town that I've been living at this property, had I been living at this property, I would have needed a continuous source of potable water, which would have come at a cost to the town, or again, the town's insurance company. And speaking to Clearwater out of Manchester, it would cost about five thousand a month to drop a tanker truck on the property for extended periods of time. I still have no idea if of this, no, I know use of this property, and so I will leave it up to you with the best example that I can to sum up what is happening to me. Imagine someone punching someone else in the face through no fault of their own, of the person being punched, then that person who was punched, uh then the person who broke, punched the other person, broke their hand while punching that person, and then sues them to, for their medical bills. This is outrageous, and I look for for solutions at my property in the near future, thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to speak, you can press uh star nine or raise your Zoom hand?
Mine's real short this time, I just hope everybody was kind of listening to Barry. We gotta realize we can't, we gotta watch what we're spending, and we're worried about how it's impacting the school budget. Yeah, that's only gonna get worse as years go forward, so it's gotta be some thought put into that as to how they spend their money. I would also like to point out the the fact that we don't know if it's gonna go down to a double A or whatever. Don't forget, that's a slippery slope, I mean, if we do, don't do things correct, we're just as close to an A rating as a triple A rating. I think A rating would be easier to get to than a triple A if we lose it. And also on the uh investment thing, I don't think we can, it's not guaranteed, and I, I think I've seen signs already with CD rates going down and different things like that. And with all this trash about the presidency and all that kind of stuff, we don't know exactly what's gonna happen. So I wouldn't count on getting another million dollars next year, so I'd be very cautious as to how much we take from the fund and have to try to come up and replace it with. So I, I just, uh it's just my concerns there on those two things. Thank you.
Anyone online who'd like to speak? Not seeing anyone, and having full participation from the in-person groups. Uh we will move on to item sixteen, which is adjournment, there must be adjournments.
Saluted.
Moved by Council Mari, is there a second?
Second.
Ooh.
I can make Council Shay.
Is there any objection to adjournment? Any objection, any, all right, without objection, then, we are.